All right, Nosferatil Town Council Meeting, October 6, 2025. Madam Clerk, can you start us with the prayer and the pledge, please?
Thank you for bringing us together today in a spirit of generosity. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in a fruitful outcome. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God.
Here.
Mr. Christopher.
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara. Mr. Punchak.
Here.
Ms. Alves.
Here. Is there a humming noise? Do you hear it? Is it okay? All right. Open forum pursuant to forty-two dash forty-six sixty, maximum three minutes per person. Anyone else wish to sign up before we do open forum? No? All right. Paul Vadney.
Paul Vadney, thirty-one Greenwood Street. Madam President, members of the council, I'm here in regards to the permitting process that we use in the town right now with the portal. I've been using it for a project that I got working on right now, and I'm running into a problem where I'm not getting answers from the inspectors. And this is regards, I'm pulling an electric permit, which I can do as a single family homeowner. I can pull my own electric permits. And first I was getting answers back from the electrical inspector, Mr. Bernardino, telling me I needed, that my price was too low for what I was doing, and that he was telling me I needed to do other things. I looked into some of, some of what he had. I actually came here and met with Mr. Cody, and he helped me resolve that issue to the point that I got an electrical permit. But the electrical inspector continues to say I need to do something. And so to try to resolve the issue, I'm asking him to cite, he's telling me that I'm not following the law and the code, which are two different things. You would know that, Mr. Punchak. And he will not tell me what law or code that I need to follow. I'm trying to get answers to this so that when he comes to do the inspection, it's exactly what he, what he's, what he's asking for. Not sitting there arguing with him, telling him I don't need it. I just want him to tell me what it is, and I've asked him twice and I'm getting no answers. I sent the building inspector a request email today, today, asking him if he could help me resolve this issue, and so I'm still getting nowhere with it, with this issue. So I came before you to try to resolve this problem, and I know you can't do it right now. So my request was to be put on the next council's agenda if I could be, that maybe we can resolve this. But in the meantime, I would ask the administrator if, if I could come and meet with him, maybe Thursday afternoon, and maybe he could look into this. And if we can resolve the issue, then I don't have to put it on the agenda. But I'm here tonight to ask you to put it on the agenda in two weeks at your next meeting. Hopefully I can get it resolved, and I'll let you know if I need to be on the agenda in due time. But that's my request tonight. I'm not getting answers. I'm using the portal like they want you to, and you know, I'm not, I'm not Bill Gates by any stretch of imagination, but I'm using the portal. It works. It does work. I'm just not getting answers that I should be getting from these building, from the building officials. So you need to be aware of that. And so if, you know, I'm going to try and continue to get answers. Like I say, I don't know if, if the administrator is available Thursday afternoon after four o'clock. I'll stop in and see if he can try to get something moving in the next couple of days, get resolution to this thing. But it's really frustrating for me. I mean, I don't have a lot of time during the day to, you know, to handle this stuff, but trying my best, and I'm just not getting answers, and it's, it's not the way it should work.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Paul, I am available. Just if you can reach out to me and lock in what date you want, time you want on the, on Thursday, that'll be fine. I mean, this is an administration issue, not a council issue, so we'll address it. We are transitioning into the go, the go, the open gov system, and it's a little bit clumsy, but reach out to me and we'll solve the problem. Okay?
Thank you. Mike Clifford.
First of all, the.
Your name and.
Oh, Mike Clifford, four eighty-nine Black Plain Road. I just wanted to suggest that maybe you should beef up the ordinance regarding these types of hearings that were supposed to be held tonight, and it wasn't held because the applicant, I understand, didn't file the, send out the notices. Could we put some type of punitive damage in there for them to incur when they do that? Because it's easy to say, I forgot to do it, or I didn't do it. And sometimes they can just say that because they don't want the, they want the hearing delayed. I think it'd be good if there was a consequence in there, and you've got an ordinance that you could change and add something like that to, if it's legal to do that, but I think it should be done. Because a lot of people were upset about that. Secondly, the, I read the article in the paper about the Main Street development subdivision with six lots, five houses, five tying into the sewers. And I'm curious to know what they're going to be paying to tie in, because is that considered an out-of-district tying in? And will they only pay a fraction of the sewer assessment that the original people paid when they, when that was run up there? Because that happened, it's happened in the past, and you do have an ordinance in there somewhere that says out-of-district, I don't know how they consider out-of-district, I've never understood it. But out-of-district only pays like a fraction, like fifty-five thousand seven hundred or something. And if you're getting, I went before the sewer commission once and complained about it and suggested that they not do that. They changed the ordinance back to what it was originally, where you paid the assessment that everybody else was charged when the, when the, when the system went in. And they, they said, well, why would we do that if the bond, because twenty years later, the bond's already paid. What would we do with the money? I'll tell you what you can do with the money. Put it into the account where you can do the repairs and maintenance, because I don't feel like paying another increase. I'm paying six, six hundred and seventy-five, six hundred and seventy-two dollars, like over three thousand dollars for that building that I own in Great Road. Five people in the building flushing the toilets, five apartments, so they charge you for five units. I have five people in there. You gave a variance to the guy who owns the Village Haven because he doesn't use all the water that he, that a normal restaurant uses. Well, I don't use all the water that a normal house with five apartments, two bedrooms each uses either. So, you know, you gave him that variance, and I don't think it was a good decision to do that, because he made the choice. He could have operated that business seven days. He chose to cut back on the number of hours and the number of water he used. I choose to try to rent to one or two people, you know, that's it. But that's my choice. But why should he get a break on that, and I'm paying full boat? I guarantee you, I'm metered, by the way. And the reason you used to give that guy a break was he had a metered water system. The whole Union Village has a metered water system. So can we all do that in Union Village? Can you do, extend the same thing to us that you extended to him? Because I know I use a fraction of what one household uses, not five. So that's the second thing. Third thing is that subdivision, I want to know what they're paying for a tie-in fee, and it's a shame that you approved it already, because if it is going in there under the fifty-seven hundred dollar per unit thing, it's too bad you didn't change it before, so we could have got some money back. The other thing is, I read in the paper, it was a, five lots were going forward now, and somebody asked about the sixth lot, and the article said, the developer just said, oh, we'll deal with that later. We're only going to build on the five at first. So my question immediately is, is that a six-lot subdivision? And is the ordinance still, is the ordinance still in place requiring one of those lots to be an affordable housing lot? Because the, prior, I don't know if the state changed, but this is the second time that that developer puts in a division, a subdivision, and starts off with a six-unit subdivision and goes down to a five, and then doesn't have to put an affordable housing lot in there. And it looks like you're doing people favors when that type of thing happens, if that's what's happening here. So I don't understand why we were able to separate it, and I don't understand if it's a five or a six-unit subdivision. I'm wondering if anybody has any answers.
I don't have the answer. We can reach out, I can, try and see what I can find out.
Okay.
Isn't it a six-lot subdivision? That's what the plan's there, right? Whether, whether he builds unit six now or in the future, he's getting approval to build six.
This is, this is not the appropriate platform to have this conversation. However, I will have Mark Crewl, the town planner, reach out to you directly to give the background on that, as I believe the sixth one is not a develop lot. And I believe there's an intent in the future to do a swap with the town on another parcel. But at this point, I believe there's only five develop lots there. The fifth one is not. There's been some online conversations about the heritage contact with, or connection with the reservoir, but I may be talking out of my pay grade. Bottom line is, that's the planner's job. Talk to the planner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, discussion by council voter, vote or other action on payment of bills. Does anyone have any question on any of the payment of bills in your PAC?
I have one question. So there's a lot of expenses in here for Pumpkin Fest. So where does the revenue from Pumpkin Fest go?
Into the same account, into the same, into the same fund that Pumpkin Fest is, is made out of, yeah.
So you are able to say whether or not that is.
They have the funds for it.
Break-even, profitable or.
Yeah, and they are relatively, they self-sustain their own expenses with the revenues that they bring in. There is a little bit of, you know, at a small period of time, they may request an extra five hundred for, you know, a vendor that might be, you know, needing upfront security deposit. But at the end of the year, once Pumpkin Fest is done, they run a net positive. And I wanted that, that fund to start being on the council, in front of the council going forward, just so it's visible. I felt as though that that was appropriate, given how they're structured.
So it is their own fund now, right? Because we.
It's always been their own fund. It's, they've always been their own fund by themselves, but they, they were never required to be on the council payment of bills until I required it this, this year. And there's future conversations we can have going forward about that.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions? Anyone else? No? Anyone like to make a motion to approve the payment of bills?
I will make a motion to approve the payment of bills for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-two cents.
Set this motion.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God.
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara. Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. Alves.
Yes.
I would like to make a second motion to approve the payment of bills for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, in the amount of two hundred eighty thousand, two hundred ninety-four dollars and two cents.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bureau God.
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara. Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. Alves.
Yes.
All right. Next one is old business. Discussion by council voter, other action on petition slash application for an amendment to the zoning ordinance pursuant to general law. Forty-five dash twenty-four dash fifty and forty-five dash twenty-four dash fifty-one, forty-five dash twenty-four dash fifty-three as follows. Petition, application for amendment to zoning ordinance filed by Pound Hill Realty LLC. In conjunction with six eighteen Greenville Road, Nosferatil, Rhode Island, oh-two-eight-nine-six, the owner of the parcel of land situated off Old Oxford Road, Pound Hill Road, and Pine Hill Road in the town of Nosferatil. More particularly described as town of Nosferatil, tax assessors plot seven, lot thirty-eight, consisting of eighty-nine point one, point four-four acres, subject property. To text amendment and a zoning map amendment to the zoning ordinance of the town of Nosferatil, the zoning ordinance, the proposed zoning amendment will create a new zoning district. Industrial Special Management District One overlay. The intent of the district is to allow mining, quarrying, sand and gravel extraction, loom dripping, stone cutting operations, crushing, washing, and/or processing of materials. The zoning map amendment proposes to amend the zoning destinations of the parcel of land located at fourteen Pine Hill Road in the town of Nosferatil. More specifically described as assessors plot seven, lot forty, thirty-eight, the property from rural agriculture RA and rural estate agriculture REA to industrial special management district one overlay. The first one is, we're going to make a motion to open, to continue the public hearing. Anyone make a motion to continue the public hearing? Open the public hearing?
I will make a motion to open the public hearing.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm confused.
We have to open, and then.
You have to open it, and then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So did we have a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bureau God.
Yes.
Mr. Christopher.
I have to recuse myself.
Mrs. O'Hara. I'm sorry, I didn't hear your answer. No? Mr. Punchak.
Yes.
Ms. Alves.
Yes. Okay, so just, can I explain what's happening? Okay, so just to let everyone know, so the public hearing was scheduled for tonight. Unfortunately, there were some situations of miscommunication or some mailings that did not go out. It has nothing to do with the town council, but we do have an attorney here tonight to explain what did happen, and that we will continue the public hearing to a further date once we get through here.
Madam President. So while you're up there, if you could just answer this question as well. We have, I'm sorry, I got a bit of a head cold, but so we, we were going to have the public hearing tonight. We're going to have everything going on at the, the middle school. Okay, and the reason why we're not doing that is because the notices never went out, the certified letters never went out. But we weren't ready to vote on this anyway, because we haven't received anything from the planning board, so we weren't going to be able to vote anyway. So shouldn't we have just held the hearing the way it was, keep everybody happy, let everybody have their say, and then just say we can't, just, just continue it and not vote on it? Because a lot of people are very upset right now.
I understand why the town's upset. So let me first answer the question of what happened and why, and the answer is, it's completely all my fault. It has nothing to do with the town whatsoever. It is my fault. It's not the applicant's fault. The applicant had nothing to do with this. The town provided me an email notifying that, you know, because this matter had gone off of the date certain, that we had to go through the process of advertising and sending out the notices to the abutters. And completely, again, my fault. We went through the process of advertising it. It's properly advertised. However, we realized this afternoon, when the town asked us to put together the affidavits, that, again, completely all my fault. It was properly told by the town to do it. We simply did not send out the letters. So that's the reason. It has nothing to do with the town, has nothing to do with Pound Hill. There was absolutely no, no reason other than it was completely a mistake on my part. It was an email that was sent to me. I addressed getting the advertising done that day, and, and I absolutely, I just, I made a clerical error and simply just forgot to, to put together, which we already have, since we've already done, send out a copy of the, of the ad to the abutters. So that's why we cannot move forward. So it's on that basis, and that basis is alone, the only reason why today's hearing could not go forward. Now, my understanding is, kind of answering your question, is that the town intends on having the presentation from GZA. Now, GZA wasn't going to be available today as well, and I think we're working with them as to when they're going to be available, and we'll go through the proper notice requirements that the town will set forth to make sure that the next time around, this does not happen again. And I, again, I cannot apologize enough, and simply do not read this, you know, anything into us other than simply my mistake. I did not handle it right. It had nothing to do with, again, the town nor the applicant. The applicant didn't even know about any of this mistake. Like, this was completely on me and me alone. Did I answer your question?
You did all right.
I mean, the answer is why we couldn't go forward today is simply, it, it would, we're in violation of the open reading laws.
Well, we could have gone forward, just not called a vote.
I don't think we could, because the people who should have gotten notice of this by mail could have attended this meeting. Technically said, if I didn't get the mailing, I didn't know about the public hearing that took place. So it's their opportunity to actually even be heard that's missing, not just the vote. I understand that you guys, you know, what you guys were going to potentially do or not do with the vote, it's, the reality is, people were supposed to give notice of this. I understand the town is a small town. This is a pretty hotly contested issue, as we all know, and the reality is, most everyone knew about today, because it has run in the newspaper for the last three weeks. But by law, those people were supposed to get notice. They did not. They did not receive their mailing, so they could make an argument that this public hearing took place without them getting the proper notice, and we wouldn't have wanted to put the town in that position.
If I can also clarify, because of the delay between the first public hearings and when we basically put them on pause, it was such a significant delay, the council said that we really needed to go back out and to advertise again for the public hearing. And that meant also doing the formal notification if the abutters were in the two-hundred-foot radius. The latter was not done, so therefore the public hearing would not be legal.
And the town did everything. They gave us plenty of notice, a very clear email. It simply was on my end that I, and I fall on the sword on this one. I read the advertising, and we just, I did not do the, the mailings, and should have. I should have known.
So I want to appreciate you coming and explaining that, but can we just step back? Can you just state your name for the record?
Ryan Hurley. I'm here for the applicant, Pound Hill Realty.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Does anyone have any questions for the attorney?
Well, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I mean, technically speaking, see, people, this is a very, this is a very hot issue, okay? And people were expecting to be heard tonight. People were expecting to go there tonight. We could have had it tonight and continued the meeting, continued the, and, and then the people who were notified could have continued the meeting to another day after we let people do their thing tonight, right? And then if we continued it, they wouldn't have been disenfranchised, then they would have had another opportunity at the next meeting to get up and speak or do, or attend the meeting.
It's not how it works, though, John.
It is how it works. It's exactly how it works.
What you're saying, but if it wasn't, if it, the abutters weren't notified, and they didn't have a chance to come, even though we didn't vote on it, and they still would have liked to have the opportunity to speak at the first meeting we're having. So, and then now find out GZA couldn't come either, too. Is that, so there really would have been nothing to talk about, because our experts wouldn't have been there either. So I guess this kind of all fell in place for the right reasons, because we would have not had a public hearing anyway after we're all at the middle school.
The reality is, yes, that GZA wasn't going to be here. I think the main purpose of the next meeting, whenever that's going to be, is to have GZA present the report to the town and to the public and answer questions about it. So the substance of today's meeting, the main purpose and goal of today's meeting would not have been accomplished one way or the other. But because of errors I made and the technicalities, I agree that the town is taking the right actions and not going forward. Because again, there could have been some public hearing comments made that other people who were deserved notice by law would not have potentially heard and could have made an issue of it. So it's just better off moving to the next available date when GZA is going to be here and present to present their findings.
I ask a question. So moving forward, can we kind of set expectations? Because I know there's a planning board aspect to this. We now need to set a date certain. We need to get GZA. we need to get GZA, so, you know, here we are, October sixth. We can't go in two weeks because, you know, two-week notice, so, you know, we're talking first week of November, is that realistic? Does the planning board get to do their thing? Like, there just needs to be some kind of timeframe, I think that's real.
I agree a hundred percent. Bottom line is, we can't do November third because November third, GZA, the primary person is on the road. He's from Indiana, so he's traveling on business. So, I had spoken to the council president about this, and the thought would be, because we have to continue this to a date certain, if we don't, then we'll have to continue the advertise all over again. So, the thought would be to go to a date certain of November fourteenth? Fourteenth? Seventeenth. But the goal would be possibly to have a special meeting on this, it can't be before the fourteenth or seventeenth under law, but then it will work with Mark Carullo to make sure the planning board does their thing as well, so all that's in places, you know, as well. So, we're looking at something after the seventeenth, councilman, but we haven't, we're gonna have to do date certain for the seventeenth, at that point come up with a special meeting after that date.
And the planning board hopefully gets what they need to do done prior to the seventeenth.
Yeah, I'll talk to Mark Carullo on that to make sure I really understand what his timeframe is as well. I know that Mark's had meetings with the applicant on that issue, so I wanna make sure I know exactly where he stands.
Okay. Any other questions?
Can I ask, so, the seventeenth, we're continuing it to a date certain on the seventeenth, but we're intending that that's not gonna be the time when GZA puts on their presentation?
Yeah, no, because the council president won't be at that meeting.
Gotcha.
So, we wanna make sure that the, all the councils here.
Makes sense.
So, but we can't have it before the seventeenth if we do that date certain under law, so it'd have to be under this, after the seventeenth to do a special meeting. So, we're, we're gonna work on that and obviously, we will coordinate that with you.
Maybe this is a stupid question, but why wouldn't we say November third date certain? Yes, we understand that GZA is not available, but at least November third, we can...
Cause we can't advertise.
Then we can advertise.
No, we can't in terms of the, we won't meet the notification requirement, I don't believe, actually we wouldn't meet the notification. We could do that.
You could use November third.
We could, knowing full well that we're not gonna have it on November third, but we could do November third.
You know, hopefully falls within that third to seventeenth.
Yeah, we could do that as well, yeah.
I would rather see that.
Yeah, because once the seventeenth rolls around, then we have the holidays.
And it's next year.
Yep.
Yeah.
But I'll make sure, talking to the town planner when the planning board is scheduled to meet on this issue as well. Although I think that the full, the full purpose of the public hearing was to hear the peer review presentation and to allow the public to make comment on the peer review. I don't think the intention was ever to have a vote on that night.
Yeah, okay.
Town Solicitor, if the public hearing is open, may I speak as an abutter? If the town, if the public hearing is open, may I speak as an abutter?
You could speak as an abutter.
Okay.
But she means tonight?
Tonight, right now.
Right now, you wanna speak as an abutter?
Yeah, I just have a clarifying question about our ordinances. Okay, thank you.
If you can.
You can stay there.
You open up the public hearing, that's your capacity.
Okay, thank you. My question is actually in relation to our ordinances, so it's my understanding that state ordinance requires that the applicant send out a notice to abutters or residents within two-hundred feet of the quarry. However, per our ordinance, it's my understanding that the applicant would have to send out a notice to residents or, you know, whomever businesses within a hun, within a thousand feet of that property. So, which is it?
That's the first I've heard of that ordinance, I'd have to look at it.
Same with me. Okay. I, I was in conversation with somebody today who did confirm that with Mark Carullo. So, I think we should probably just get an understanding of which we have to abide by to ensure that all of the appropriate people are notified.
I know time in my conversations with the planner, did anyone say anything about a thousand, but I'll double check with Mark tomorrow on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Oh, and Rebecca de Christopheraro, nineteen thirty-one, council room.
Thank you. All right, any other questions for attorney?
Madam President, I just wanna make a note, just so the board, the board is aware. The notice was indicating that the public hearing would be in this building, as I indicated to the president, if you were gonna ever change it from this building, you'd have to do it. If tonight you had a over, over, you know, a crowd that was over capacity, then you could make an announcement to leave. You couldn't just go to another place without re-advertising. So, I'm gonna suggest the same process. I don't think we should deviate with the advertisement. November third is here and any future event will be here, but if the event of an overcrowding that, on that night, you will recess and move to the school.
So, we don't just open in recess, we have to wait until we hit capacity? Is that what you're saying?
No, you could open in recess, but you gotta start here.
Okay, yeah.
You gotta start here, unless we're gonna start this whole advertisement again, and I just don't wanna do it again.
No, that's, yeah, that's what we had planned on doing, yeah.
Just so we're clear.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Attorney Hurley.
Again, I do apologize to everyone.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor, I appreciate it.
All right, so, I'll make a motion to table the, or continue, continue the public hearing to date certain of November third.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just a clarification, so we're continuing it to November third, knowing that we're not gonna have it on November third, right?
Yeah, we're gonna do a special meeting.
That sounds like, that makes sense.
We have no choice. So, we're gonna try to do a special meeting between November third and November seventeenth and call a special meeting, but if we don't set a, if we don't set a certain date, then we have to re-advertise the whole thing. That's why we're doing this. Now, you know, I don't invite, I don't invent the rules, the rules of law, that's the law.
Okay.
Would it be easier if we just re-advertise?
You're willing to do that?
I, I, I'll eat the cost on it personally. If that's what the town prefers, that's fine, I will, if, I mean, I don't, that's not a problem.
Cause then we can advertise the right location, we can make sure we can confirm a date.
I think it's cleaner that way.
Okay, if you want.
If that's what the, I'm perfectly fine with that.
That would be better.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree.
So, that's three more weeks though, in the paper, plus the two weeks to the abutters. So, that puts us right back at the same spot anyway.
Well, three weeks is before November third, and if we do the abutter notices right away, then we're within the two weeks on that. So, we could still do November third.
But it's irrelevant.
Well, it is irrelevant. It is irrelevant.
Well, we'll get a date certain first.
Could, what if, what if we did the seventeenth? We know that GZA can't be here on the third.
That's what we just, that's where we just started from, so...
Well, but it'll be cleaner, more understandable, that you won't have two meetings in the place.
But we don't, can't do it November seventeenth either.
That's right. Council President?
Oh, you're not here the seventeenth, I apologize, I forgot about that.
So, that's why I suggested we go for the early date and try to get something within the third to the seventeenth.
Yeah, which I think's the most logical.
Can we just see if they're available on the tenth?
I, we will, we're trying to get a confirmation from GZA on their availability. We will have that by tomorrow, and I'm also trying to do this, I'll, I'll circle back with Mark Carullo as relates to this timing on the, on the planning board.
Okay. So, we can just confirm with you a date then, once we get all this information from GZA and that we're, as soon as possible, obviously?
But we still have to continue to a date certain, so is that gonna be?
There is a motion and a second.
If I re-advertise, it...
Well, that's correct.
Iglesias can correct me, but if I agree to do the advertising, that at least gives us the flexibility to pick a date, and then we can just pick that date, and then we'll follow whatever abutting ordinance for the notices that need to go out, we'll redo the advertising and everything. It'll be one clean shot.
Yeah.
And again, I said, for the applicant, we're willing to do that.
So, we're just gonna close the public hearing today, is that what we would do? Continue or close it?
If we're going to re-advertise, close it.
Okay.
That's the plan, that's it.
So, no disrespect to Mr., to Mr. Hurley, but I feel like we're putting all of our eggs back into their basket with advertising, and knowing that we're not doing anything until after November seventeenth right now.
Well, no, we could try and do the tenth.
We can try to do the...
As long as you, we can get the dates.
The goal.
The goal would be to try to arrange something before the seventeenth. That's the goal. As long as we can confirm all the key players in this, that's the goal.
So, if he re-ad advertises, he re-ad advertises for a special meeting.
Yeah, and, and as long as we can get the date quick to you, we'll have no problems in meeting the statutory requirements or notification.
That's fine with me. We will, we will, once I get the date, we know we're gonna change the location, I will have everything ready to go.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So, I rescind my second on the motion.
And did I make the motion? So, I rescind my motion, right? So, now make a motion to close the public hearing?
I, I just, just to table. We can close the previous public...
We're just gonna table it to future date?
Just not coming, I'm just table it, we don't wanna close it.
So, just table it to a future date?
Yeah. Future date would be advertised and noticed.
Okay.
Which is exactly what we did now. That's exactly what we did to get to this point.
All right, so I'll make a motion to table the public hearing to a future date advertised in, in what?
Re-notice.
In re-notice. That's a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bureau Goddard?
Yes.
Mr. Chris...
Recuse.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Panchak?
Yes.
Ms. Sals?
Yes. Thank you again.
Counselor, also, and I have utmost respect in my town planner, but can you also make sure going forward that you copy me on everything? So, I can have a second set of eyes to make sure that we're on, on, on T here.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, B, discussion by council vote, other action on status slash progress report, items one, code of conduct, reminder and deadline, Mr. Christopheraro?
Thank you, and bear with me, sometimes I have a hard time talking and breathing at the same time being six months pregnant. So, just to provide a little bit of a background, I guess this is the reminder component of it as well, but the code of conduct was sent out to all elected and appointed officials at the end of July from the town clerk's office, specifically Tammy Robin. The request essentially was that if you acknowledge and agree with this code of conduct, to reply to the email so they could then record that you are in compliance with the code of conduct. That email only went out once, so I would like to provide all of our elected and appointed officials another opportunity to acknowledge this code of conduct, especially prior to reappointments in November. So, I'm going to work with the town clerk's office to resend that correspondence out to the appropriate people, following the same guidelines essentially that in response to this email, you are essentially acknowledging and accepting the code of conduct, and I would like to have a deadline of the end of October, given that we start to discuss reappointments at the end of November. So, that is my status progress report item.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So, you, you bringing up about the, you wanna have it before the reappointments, and so you're saying that if somebody doesn't sign the code of conduct, that that is something that will be used against them when it comes to being reappointed?
I would take that into consideration, personally, I would take that into consideration.
Okay, cause I, I personally would urge people to not sign that.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm certainly not gonna sign it.
Okay.
But I don't think that that should be a factor in deciding whether or not a good person, that we could've been on, sitting on that board for a long time or whatever, that should not be a factor in deciding whether or not that person should be sitting on that, on that committee.
That will be a factor in my decision.
Well, it must be a factor in mine, only the other way around.
Okay. Town Solicitor?
Yes.
Am I allowed to use whether or not an elected or appointed official acknowledged and accepted the code of conduct? Am I allowed to allow that to influence my decision reappointing?
You can allow anything to influence your decision you want, but I, I just wanna, and I don't know what the record reflects, I wasn't aware that the council required that everybody acknowledge and sign, that was a requirement of the council. I thought it was adopted and it was requested to, I, I think you'd have to look at the record. I don't think the council ordered every board and commission member to acknowledge and sign it. So, you could do that because it was asked, but I don't know if that was a, an edict that the council issued when they approved that code of ethics.
I thought we did discuss having it included, especially in all of our applications.
Right, but acknowledged and signed, I don't recall that language.
So, then essentially retroactively, we can't...
No, no, I'm not saying you can't, you can consider what you want, I think you should, we should look at the record to see what the council...
Okay.
It's one thing to say, I'm acknowledging that I received it, it's another thing saying that I'm acknowledging and signing that I agree with everything you're saying.
Okay.
The big difference.
Mm-hmm.
Don't forget, all boards and commissions have to receive copies of the Open Meetings Act, have to receive copies of the Open Records Act. We hope that when they receive them, they agree with them, but they don't have to, to be a board member, right? We have to enforce it, they don't have to agree to it. So, I'm not trying to dissuade you, Counsel, I just wanna assure you that, I don't know if that council actually voted that it's a condition to be a board member.
Oh, no, no, no. We did not say that it was a condition, no. We did not say that it was a condition. We didn't say that everybody is required to sign, no, not at all. But I think that's a really good segue to probably one of my last items, so I'll save that, the whole process, especially regarding Open Meetings Act and, and all of those other components, for later. But with that being said, I can circle back and see what we did discuss, it was my understanding that we were going to ask that our elected and appointed officials acknowledge, and if that's not the case, that's, then, then we can talk about how to pursue that in next steps. But with all of that being said, yes, I would allow that to influence my decision.
So, which is it? Are we, is there, are they required to sign it or are they not?
We didn't say that they were required to sign, John.
Okay.
It is completely up to your personal opinion on it.
Okay, and I'm not, I'm not saying, and I would encourage other people to not sign it as well.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's all I have.
Municipal Building Review Task Force, ECC updates. So, they have, we're continuing to work on the proposals or the qualifications for the construction manager, and we have a special meeting planned for October sixteenth for ECC to come in and go over all those details. So, that will be an agenda that goes out for everyone to, to know about that meeting.
May I ask a question, Madam President? I think as we start to talk more about the specifics and the funding for the police station, I think we need to understand funding for the police station. It wasn't, and maybe this was just me not having, you know, enough background on the police station, but it, I didn't realize that we didn't have all the funding to actually fund the project. So, I think especially, you know, in preparation of some of these conversations regarding, you know, approving whoever our, what is it, uh?
Construction management.
Construction management our partner will be, that we also need to, in parallel, start to understand what our funding options are.
The council president has asked me to include on that agenda item, conversation about project capitalization.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Discussion by council vote, other action on implementation of section three, ten Discussion by council vote on other action on implementation of section 310-11 of the Code of Ordinance, no parking and limited parking traffic control devices, specifically on south side of Union Square in Park, to Park Ave. Ms. O'Hara and Mr. Bureau God?
Well, from what I understand, that's already, it may not be signed, properly signed, but from what I understand, it is already a no parking area from, all the way from the corner of South Main Street and Greenville Road, all the way up to Stop and Shop.
It was voted on with the last council. Pardon me. It was voted on by the last council. It was done so because we had, when they had a lot of things at Berryfield, et cetera, people, they're actually parking on sidewalks all, all the way down. But secondly, if we go back a little further, on that side of the street, and it, they did have a sidewalk. You had a gasoline station. What you go to get oil and all that was the garage for a car dealership, for MGs across the street. You had the dealership, then you had the garage. Then there's a house where the Rianos, the White House, next to the garage for the dealership. And then you went up. I don't really know exactly when the Gillette's house went there because the next house.
Mrs. O'Hara, we shouldn't really be naming names. We shouldn't.
Well, okay, I, I, I don't do it in, in a bad manner. I just want you to envision. These are all the houses going up. I'll say the Gray House then. And then the White House, if you look at it, there's front, there were front stairs. They changed it, going down a walkway, going down another set of stairs onto a, onto a sidewalk. You wouldn't have a set of stairs going into the road. And I apologize if I said a name. I didn't do it to go against them, but I envisioned the houses. So that was a sidewalk going from all the way up to Bushy School. Kids walked to school at that time. My son walked to school on those sidewalks. When we passed that ordinance with the last council, there was no parking from Union Square to Park Square. We put it forth. Now, things changed a little. And there's no act, if they park on that, people won't have access. People walking won't have access from, from Greenville Road if they just wanna walk to go to Stop and Shop to get something or to church or anything else. But that was passed in the last session. It's nothing, nothing against them, but your parking essentially, which is a walkway, and it's on a curve, and it's very difficult to get around there. You'd be walking in the street.
Isn't this, isn't this really a patrol issue?
Yeah, in fact, I would suggest that at a next meeting, for example, that you ask Chief Lafferty to show up. I know the chief has had conversations with DOT, the Safety Division, on the parking on Smithfield Road, and it will be enlightening. So he's had the discussions with, with, that's a state, state law, a road, with the state regulatory body. So I think he could really help clarify all this stuff. And, and as it relates to the parking restrictions on that road, which, as he has told me, it's restricted.
Okay, so can we put that on the next agenda and ask that Chief Lafferty attends?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
But that was passed, it passed ordinance.
Again, I think the important point is, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that, councilwoman. I'm just simply saying is, that is a state road. And it's under state jurisdiction. And DOT is really the, the body that, that makes those decisions. And those conversations have been held between the police chief and DOT on that issue. And in fact, I was out at the property, not out at the property. I drove down the street last week and I saw DOT's truck there actually painting the area. So I think they're reacting to it now.
Okay.
I have to bring one thing up, and it's. There's a sidewalk. And when I saw, they, there's no parking signs, so you could walk. Suddenly, I'm coming home, and they took signs out and put them different places. So it didn't go all the way down to, to Greenville Road. And that wasn't in the ordinance. People called DOT and had it changed, which was complete, and not, not going along what, what we, we put forth. I saw them change it. It was from one thing to the other, and suddenly it was no longer from Greenville Road to Park.
Yeah, again, I have no historical basis here to disagree with anybody on this, other than to say that I just think it's important to council know that there has been high level discussions on this very issue, and I think we need to have the chief come in and talk about those.
Okay.
Have you seen any updated drawings for the school?
Uh, oh, that's not on the agenda. But I have been told that we, the town will be part of the conversations with the state. And I've had great conversations with the school department. So we will be part of those conversations. And there was an agreement that we really need to have. There was a gentleman's understanding that there should be parking, there should be sidewalks on both sides of that street.
Thank you. New business discussion by council vote on other action on boards and committees engagement. Mr. Christopher Harrow.
Thank you. I think as you can tell, I'm obviously a huge advocate, and I really appreciate our, the work of our boards and committees. In everybody's packet, you did receive a proposal for an engagement session with our boards and committees, and it's essentially to outlines what I'm hoping would be more of like a formal support process that we could put into place to really support the good work of our boards and committee members. So to date, I don't think there really has been any formal support mechanism, so inclusive of goal development, as well as communication vehicles for our boards and committees and commissions to really interact with and engage with, not just our town council, but also with our administration and in turn, other boards and committees as well. I think additionally too, we've heard from our volunteers that they feel as though they're undervalued. They really feel as though they're not connected to our town council administration. They feel as though their work goes unseen or unappreciated. And they would really also like more direction from our town council. And that's not to say that, you know, they couldn't join an open forum or request to be on a meeting, and we could collaborate with them that way. But we haven't really enabled a system for them to do that. I think as well as a council, as a town, really, we appreciate and we rely upon the work of our boards and committees. They help us to foster community. They help us to progress town goals and projects. And we really want to ensure that we're acknowledging their efforts and collaborating with them to really further our commitment to enhancement and development in our town. So I'm proposing a process to really better support our boards, committees and commissions by providing them with the format to develop and measure goals, effectively report out their efforts, and then regularly engage with the council and respective officials for feedback and collaboration. So I would like to mention that this really truly mirrors some of the work that the groundwater protection committee has completed to date. So I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. My daughter was very ill. But I know that Cynthia Roberts and Beth Newberry did present their guiding principles, as well as strategic plan and some of the actions that they were going to, that the groundwater protection committee was going to work towards over the next year in order to really deliver on those goals. So I think the format that they've pulled together, I would really like to mirror that format and provide our boards, committees and commissions with that similar structure in order to really support them in their efforts. So with all of that being said, I would like to propose a meeting for the beginning of December, so after we complete our reappointments in November. I would love to invite all of our board, committee and commission members, but I know that that might be a Herculean effort. But I would really like to invite the chairs, as well as co-chairs, and, you know, two to three representatives from boards and committees to attend essentially this engagement session, to understand, you know, just some high level background, like what's the history of the town? What are some of our projects? What are our long-term goals? I kind of voluntold some people on my agenda. So town solicitor and town administrator, you're noted there. Just to really allow them to better understand some of the short-term and then long-term goals and projects where that, those boards and committees and commissions could also to lock in, to really use those projects and long-term goals to essentially inform their guiding principles and strategic plans as well. I would then like to provide a high level update, like you mentioned, open meetings, potentially code of conduct, some of the other state and, and town municipal laws that our boards and committees need to be made aware of. And then also use the lion's share of the time to outline what are guiding principles? What are strategic plans? How would you essentially develop these action items? And then establishing a cadence so we can invite our boards, committees and commissions to present their, you know, what are their, what are their achievements? What do they like to, what are they planning on working on? How can they better collaborate with the town council in order to ensure that we're progressing these goals, not just for the boards, committees and commissions, but also for the town? So it's all outlined in the agenda, and I'm happy to read through it if, if you'd like it on the record. But I'll pause here for any questions.
So is this one you're gonna go through and like basically give an overview of what the board is supposed to do? Like what you had talked about before? Cause some of them may not know what their actual.
I didn't mention that, but it is in there. It's just essentially what is the role and responsibility of a board, committee, commission? And then also to specifically providing those members in attendance with an understanding of what their board, committee and commission is supposed to be focusing on. I think that they're, like, yes, we know that they're in the charter, and they might be in our ordinances, and they might have resolutions. But sometimes those are difficult to find. And I just think a level set to understand what they're supposed to be focusing on and what their scope is would also be helpful. One of the outcomes of this proposed engagement session as well would be that then that board, committee, commission, co-chair or chair would go to their next meeting and present this. So like, this is the expectation. We're going to work together to develop our strategic plan, to develop guiding principles that fall within the scope of our board, committee, commission objective. And then essentially establish a regular cadence where they could meet with the town council to report out on their progress, or, you know, if they have any questions, if they need any direction, if they would like any feedback, that's also a vehicle as well. So I have this tentatively scheduled right now for December 10th. Again, it's right after appointments. And then my hope is that over the course of Q1, so January, February, March, the boards, committees and commissions could work towards developing these guiding principles and strategic plans together, and then start to present them to or share them with the town council beginning in March. I'd also love for Cynthia Roberts from the groundwater protection committee to join me in this engagement session, since she did do such a great job in developing, in really championing the guiding principles and strategic plan for groundwater protection. I think she has a really great handle on it, and I think they've done really great work. So I've included her in this as well. This would not be a requirement for other town council members to attend, but I think we would need to talk about, is that a public meeting? Is it not a public meeting? I don't really know some of like the laws around that.
Majority of the council's gonna be there. It's gonna be a public meeting.
Okay. So then maybe we just make it a public meeting, you know, with the assumption that the majority of council members might attend. Thoughts?
Sounds great.
Would the preference be to have invite everybody? And if everybody shows up, they show up?
You mean all the board and committee members?
Yeah.
I would absolutely love to invite everybody. Yeah, we would have to host it somewhere else where we could accommodate. But, cause sometimes I think that like, I don't wanna rely upon the chair and the co-chair to just relay this information. I think sometimes firsthand knowledge is more easily.
Well, I guess, so, I, I guess I'm just wondering if appointments are done in November and you're looking at December 10th for this.
Mm-hmm.
Does that give, you know, opportunities? Say there is turnover in boards to have a chair appointed prior to. So just, you know, functionally does that timeframe work? Or do you say, okay, let's do our appointments? The committee has their first meeting, aware that they are potentially coming to this, decides who their chair, co-chairs are, and then they come to this meeting.
So you think in January?
I, I just, you know, otherwise you're gonna have a lot of people there, or potentially people there that know they're on a committee, but really have no idea what the committee's about.
Yeah.
Is there like, is there a way? This is, would be a, a, a big task between now and the end of November. But like a Cliff Notes for each committee?
Mm.
You know, as opposed to you give somebody like the ordinance that explains what they're doing. People get through two paragraphs and they stop reading. They go to the meeting and say, okay, what are we, you know, all about?
Yeah.
Exactly. So, you know, just to try to make it so that, you know, it's pretty simple. Everyone's super busy.
Yeah. So you think providing that to all members, like a, after reappointments?
Or even if, even if you said the first meeting for a committee is, let's, you know, go through our charter, our ordinance, what we're here for.
Yeah.
You know, we're gonna go to this meeting, and we're all gonna have an understanding of what our purposes, even if it's, you know, 10 bullet points. This is what we think we're doing.
Yeah. I like that. And I, and like, I think about this a lot because especially being a project manager and supporting some onboarding efforts in my project management capacity, like, how are we also to onboarding new members, right? Like, and it's not just to their board and committee, but it's also like, what's an understanding of municipal government? What's going on in our town? So I think that that's also a really good, that might be a good pilot, David, to develop like a document like that, to really help to onboard especially new members. I think I can think through that. I was planning for December 1 because reappointments occur in November, and 2 because I'm due in January. So I was hoping to get it done before then. But I think we could play with it.
Something to do with your route.
Yes, it'll give me a lot to do in a round. I won't have enough. So it, I think we can talk, I can think a little bit more through timeline, and then maybe use our next meeting to propose something a little bit more finite.
Yeah, unless we let the, the board or committee work through the first quarter and then roll this out, you know, after they've gotten used to their meetings and, you know.
Yeah. Or we can also just provide them with like, you know, a high level, to your point, David.
Yeah.
This is your background. Here's an understanding of, or this will be coming, guiding principles, strategic plan. We'd like you to start thinking through this. And then we could use that engagement session, not just for the high level overview that I just provided, but also to, could it be more of a workshop? Where we can talk through, like, work collaboratively to talk through guiding principles, plan, and also to identify where there might be like a segue with other boards, committees and commissions as well. Like I'm thinking like groundwater protection. Could we be working, you know, closely with the conservation committee? So there are like complimentary committees and boards that could probably partner here on some of their plans as well.
Yeah.
I like that. Okay, I will take this back to the drawing board and I'll finesse it a little bit, and then I'll come back with a different proposal to accommodate timeline.
Um, I'd like to add, great presentation, by the way. I, I just wanna address something. And it's been taken, supposedly by attack of me. Old school. Every time I go down Church Street, I, I look at a house and I don't look at the number. I'll say the Vadenay's house or so-and-so. They may have been dead forever, but I'm old enough to remember the people down the line. It's not a personal attack. Wouldn't know the number. And I lived in certain areas all my seven, eight years. So if from now on, if I have to say a gray house, three from the corner where the sports car place started.
Almac's used to be.
Yeah, I mean, wait, oh, I said that moment on. That, it's not an attack. Old school, it's a referral. I, when I go down Fountain Hill Road, oh, the old burgess, the old this house, this one's house. It was the way it was done. Old dogs find hide using, I have to begin taking a notebook and putting down, I guess, numbers on those streets. But it wasn't done in an offensive way, I can assure you.
Thank you, Claire. Discussion by council vote on other.
Madam President?
What?
Can you just make a suggestion?
Yeah.
I, I, because of the references, if, in the past, what we've done in the, on the council is we've had a meeting, a public hearing, where we invited the attorney general's department to make a presentation by, on the OMA and the APRA. And they usually do it nowadays, most of the time I experienced, they do it by, by Zoom. And then the Ethics Commission will say, has a lawyer who will make a presentation. You might want to have your agenda set up to, if you want those three presentations, have them on, and coordinate them with the AG's office. And that, and that would, that applies to all boards and commissions.
Mm-hmm.
And that'd be, regardless of what board or commissioner, and those three things apply to everybody. State ethics, APRA, open meetings. And then when you get down to further on the agenda, the Planning Board and Zoning Board are kind of a different category. Planning Board and Zoning Board have a specific statutory authority and mission. They would not be coordinating. They would not be, they wouldn't be consulting the council on a project.
Right.
They, they, those things would actually be inappropriate for those boards to do. They're supposed to be operating independently of the council once you appoint them. So that, that's a different category than a committee you create, like the overlay water or the committee to build the school. That's different. That's a committee that's supposed to be a task force type committee that has a specific task and goal. So I don't know if you wanna break your agenda into open meetings, access to records, and ethics, and we can bring in the three professionals from the AG and the Ethics Commission, and then break it down into those other categories. It's just a thought. Otherwise, otherwise if you, if you don't wanna hear from them, that's fine. But if you wanna hear from them, we should put them first. I guess that's my real, my real point. You should put the, them first on the agenda.
Not, not to overtax the state officials, but we, the administration has a, a training session in January with the Attorney General's Office and Secretary State's Office on those very issues.
Okay.
So it's hard sometimes to get them out here. So we can either, you can do a three-year event, or we can make sure the boards or commissions are invited to it when we do it for staff.
Yeah, why don't we?
That would be a better way.
Yeah, how about we connect on that? I also don't, I, I wouldn't want this workshop or engagement session to be like a three-hour thing. So maybe it's a two-part series. Maybe it's that, and then it's, it's more of like a workshop with the boards and committees and commissions. workshop with the boards and committees and commissions. I realize that the boards obviously have, you know, law that they need to follow. I would like to at least include them in the workshop, they may have some input for some of our other committees and commissions to consider as well. I know that they're really great thought partners. So I will connect town administrator with you to understand maybe your timeline around some of the state presentations, and then come back with a proposal for our next meeting.
That's good.
May I say something?
Thank you, sure.
I kind of like what you're doing here, but maybe if we just flip it a little bit. Many years ago now, when I was on the state police, when someone got promoted, they had to go to an NCO school. So everybody that was, everybody that was promoted had, was mandatory, you had to go to the NCO school. So what you should do, my suggestion is, I know you were saying like the heads of these committees, but just the opposite, you have the new people coming in, go to these, go to these meetings and learn about the process, learn about the system. The people that have already been there, one thing, they don't want to go to a mandatory meeting, and secondly, they don't, probably really don't need a mandatory, need a meeting, but you bring in the new people, all the new appointees, since you're doing it after the, you know, after the appointments, mandatory, all the new appointees have to attend the meeting, see how the process works and how, what the system's all about.
I like that. I feel like this is becoming, like, I just have a lot of ideas given some of the feedback, so it sounds like onboarding, right? It sounds more of like an onboarding meeting for new, new members, so they can understand the history of the town, the objective of a board, committee, commission, what their objective is specific to their board, committee, or commission. I still really like the idea of an engagement workshop. I think that it is really important to provide them with a format, a structured format for guiding principles, strategic plan, and actions. If not, if not, how can we measure success? So even if it's two separate meetings where we have more of an onboarding, and then maybe an engagement workshop, I'll think through it, because I really do feel like there's, there's a need to better engage with our volunteers and appointed members. So I'll think through it, I'll come back with a few proposals for next meeting, but thank you, John, I like that idea. Okay, that's all I think I can...
What's that?
Say tonight, thank you.
Discussion by council vote or other action or communications from town administrator, Mr. Gibbs, grant writing status?
Yeah. The only two things, you have the, the update in your package, we did submit a small grant request to the Rhode Island Foundation for $10,000 in support of senior services program. Linda's kind of paved that way, working with former Congressman Cicilline. We also submitted a request today for a humongous $2,000 grant, Rebecca.
All the money counts.
Yeah. Yeah, it, I'm sitting going, why am I doing this? It's, it's a beautification award, and whether we get it or not, I don't know. But what we asked for were for some American flags and mounting brackets, and to put those flags on the telephone poles from the corner of Main Street and 146A, all the way down to School Street to front of Lindy's.
Nice.
And the idea would be that's where the parade goes for the Memorial Day, and so we'd have flags all the way up and down that avenue, and then the idea would be in the future we could exchange those flags for something else of decoration or of an event, and maybe even expand them elsewhere. Of course, working with Rhode Island Energy and Verizon on getting the authority to put flags on poles is not that easy, but we're working on that. So it's a, it's a very small grant, but, what the heck. So we did submit a few things. We also got notification on a final grant agreement, but I don't want to talk about that yet, in part because I want to coordinate it with our senator's office. The Route 146 feasibility study has been completed, it has been posted on the website. What we are trying to do at this point in time is trying to find funding support to do a second stage on that, which is a market study dealing with the land use regulatory structure for that corridor, and to provide additional details on a TIF implementation strategy. So we're trying to get some money on that, we'll see how well that goes. Asset management program, the asset management committee, I've worked, been working very closely with them. We're going to be coming back to the town council, we'll try to make sure we can, make sure we understand what the town council's demands are over the next several meetings, but we want to have them come in and basically say what they want to do to use the money that's been appropriated. I think it's a, it's a great new opportunity for the town. And finally, the municipal residency program, as I said, we, we completed that program. I expected to get the final report last week, we haven't got it yet, however, we have completed, it means we're eligible for Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank money. We will be submitting a grant request to the Infrastructure Bank probably next week for $50,000, and that is to do some engineering work to address the flooding issue in the Mechanic Street area, which is getting progressively worse. So those are the main things that we're working on.
May I ask a question? So the September update from Senator Reed 2026 request, is that the one you did not want to give more information?
No, that, that's the ones he, he included in his ask to Congress. This is something that we've been working on, that's, that was already going through the pipeline. We now have a formal agreement that has been given to us for, it's all approved, and we're ready to go on it, but I just want to make sure I show the respect of the senator's office as to whether or not he wants to be part of any public comments on it.
So this September update hasn't happened?
That's, no. That, other than those have been forwarded to Congress, but as you know...
Nothing's happened.
Nothing's happening in Washington right now.
One, one question if I may. So the Route 146 feasibility...
Yeah.
Report. So we're, now we're looking for funding for a second phase for that report?
A second phase to address three specific steps, yes.
Okay.
That second stage is probably total cost of close to $100,000 to get it all done, so we need money to get it done.
And what will that second step entail?
It will entail three components. Component one will be to do a market study. So we talk a lot about the absorption schedule, all this kind of stuff, but we really need to make sure we feel very comfortable with what the market study's telling us, although market studies change every day in our market, in our economy. Second is that the current zoning in that corridor is insufficient, and we need to come up with a zoning construct that will help guide development in a way that maximizes fiscal value to the town. And the third is, now that we've done a feasibility stage, limited feasibility stage stage with the infrastructure, or the TIF program, there's additional steps that we now have to look at, more refinement on that, so that would be the third component to it. So all three of those things are what we're asking for funding support for.
Okay, and you're looking for funding through...
Rhode Island Housing right now. They have what's called the municipal technical assistance program, which is what we use to do the rewrite of the town zoning regulations, so we're looking for them to do, to fund this as well.
Okay.
They gave us some initial feedback, we're kind of pushing back in some areas through Camoraine Associates, who was our consultant on the TIF feasibility study.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
May I ask a question? Administrator, I'm going to give you a compliment right now.
Uh-oh.
Okay.
No, I'm not used to those. Not for you, but in general.
Because a long time ago, some, there was a council, a long time ago, probably only Paul Vadenay knows the history on this, because he knows all the history of this town, but a council gave away the rights to our reservoir, and now we buy our own water from the city of Wansaka. That was a council or administration many, many years ago, before most of us were born, that didn't have a vision of the future. I appreciate that what you're doing for 146, because if we just let that go wild, it's going to end up being something that we don't want it to be. So I appreciate you staying on top of this, it's very important. That's, to me, that's the next reservoir situation, because if it gets away from us, then we're going to be, we're going to be screwed for a long time.
I think it's starting to get away from us a little bit right now, and that concerns me, which is why the land use regulatory approach, we looked at being a third phase of this whole project, and we want it now, before it gets too far ahead of us. And we're reacting to some pretty low-hanging fruit that's not in the best interest of the town.
Well, I, please stay on top of it, because we think you're doing a good job in that area.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions? Town administrator, anything else for any of your topics, you're all set?
Uh, yeah, nothing else, besides, it's not on the agenda, so I couldn't talk about it anyways.
All right. Open forum, pursuant to 42-46-60, maximum three minutes per person. Anyone like to speak?
Yeah.
Thank you. Just state your name and address, please.
Yep, Elizabeth Hammond, 19 Chester Street. Want to say good evening to my fellow residents as well as the town council. I am up here this evening to speak about the proposed code of conduct and probably ruffle a few feathers. I would like to question why our council members are so concerned about being held to any standards. I stand in front of a council who contains a member who participates in a private Facebook group, mocking one of his constituents, and another who is being investigated for cutting down a tree on public property. Multiple town projects remain unfinished, year after year, and the general consensus appears to be waiting for a problem to become as big and expensive as possible before actually fixing it. The quarry problem is now dragging on for almost a year. Last month, you transferred a small business license before the paperwork was correctly filed and the property was sold. The Halliwell project has increased by over $1 million due to inaction and delays. So not only do you not do your jobs, you also won't agree to not insult each other on Facebook. I know teenagers who hold themselves to higher standards than this. It would appear that the ultimate goal of this council is for the elected and appointed members of our government to experience as little accountability as possible, to be allowed to say and do whatever they want, whenever they want, and to face no repercussions. The proposed conduct, as I understand it, asks so very little of our town representatives and volunteers, to not insult or harass each other or your constituents, to essentially follow the same standards we already hold government employees to. The bar is in hell. How can this possibly be controversial? I would like to question specifically Councilman Beauregard, why you are so against this measure. I believe most of us in town would like to forget the Nike scandal, but I do remember, and I remember how very in favor you were of standing up against speech that you found inappropriate by a private citizen and a private company. I won't relitigate the merits of that resolution or its consequences, but I will point out the irony that you have no qualms with accountability for free speech that you don't like. You just don't want to be held to the same standards. Thank you.
I think if history has shown us anything, is that I was probably right about that whole issue.
I feel like you forget that you work for me.
Like what?
You work for the town.
For the town.
Not the other way around.
Correct. Not for any one person either, though.
Excuse me, I have never read, gone on, whatever you call it, that's how interested I am in it. Attacks are unwarranted, and there's other ways of settling things. And I don't go on it, I won't go on it, maybe for this reason.
Stand by my side. Anyone else like to speak for open forum? Elizabeth, what was your address again?
18 Chester Street.
Scott Walling, 563 Greenville Road. I want to talk about the parking issue like Mrs. O'Hara stated earlier. There's a football field across the street, they have football games on Saturday, we all know that, they have pre-teen games on Sundays, so that's nothing new. So if we're a patrolman in this town, where are we going to be on a Sunday or Saturday afternoon? We're going to swing by those cars that are being parked illegal. We're not going to have to tell the chief to enforce it. That should be routine, just like when I complain about an ordinance of the town starting before seven, material is standing stone. I shouldn't have to call because I'm woken up. Change your route. If the company's starting at 6:30 in the morning, there's not much, much business in this town. Change your route where you get your coffee, you take your break. Park out there and witness this without me having to call, because then I wake my whole family up, and I'm aggravated, I can't sleep. Well, I witnessed, I went to the football game, the high school football game, Wednesday night, the new athletic director, I don't know the guy, running back and forth to Providence Pike to, to get the cars that are illegally parked. We put a sign out there, but no police. Again, Wednesday high school football games, we got lights. That was a Wednesday night, most of the time it's going to be Friday night. Make the routine without me making a call. John, I, I saw John, and I told him what was going on. He was running, I don't think that's the athletic director's job to, to patrol the Greenville Road, I mean Providence Pike, and run up and down the stairs to give the number plates to be called, to be moved. And I expressed it to him, I said, I wouldn't do it, let him park there, because John suggested, and I said it to him, no guardrails, this is what you get, you need the ticket, or else it's going to stop. We don't want tickets, but that's the only way it's going to happen, and we shouldn't have to call. But the other thing that worries me is, it's a town football game, shouldn't we have a police presence? I mean, when the chief comes here, is that, is that a detail to come to a town meeting? Is it a detail to go to the high school? We are town residents, we deserve some representation. They should be taking care of that parking. There was all illegal parking inside the parking area up top, and they were, I was to, I walked in and told people, you can't park there, you're going to get towed. Okay, so no lesson. And the other thing I'd like to say is, is this next meeting for the open forum on, on the overlay district, it's not going to come November 7th, 13th, it will be 2026. This, this, this team has successfully mocked everybody, and they're continuing to do it 40 years later, and, and I see it happening again, it just aggravates me. They're professionals at dilly-dally and dragging this out in the legal system, and in the meantime, they get their, what they're needed, and we're all affected by it. It's time to end this. We have to get going on this. This guy here that was just talking tonight, is that a puppet testimony? Is that a definition of a puppet testimony? You quoted that earlier this year. Is he a puppet testimony? Because I feel he is, because he's saying what you want to hear. We really need, whether he sounds nice and legit, legal and all this stuff, his fault, totally his fault, I'm not buying it. I hope you guys don't buy it, because they're, 40 years of playing this game. Please open your eyes and do the right thing for the town, and Mrs. O'Hara, you can say any name you want, because that's how I do it too.
Old school.
That's how you do it, you're a townie, and that's how you can do it. So, thank you, and, and I will do the same thing if I give a name out, I know exactly who you're talking about, same with you. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else like to speak in public forum, open forum? Anyone else? No. All right. Anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.